Call or meet in order and stand for the pledge. Attention, salute. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thoughts for voting, please. Thank you very much. Welcome to our monthly meeting. We're here to accomplish the business of schools for the sake of our students. We do want to hear from our citizens. There's time for public comment. Prior to action items on the agenda, we ask that speakers identify themselves and what their home district is. We also ask that your comments are limited to three minutes in order to provide impact equity while speakers ensure meetings remain linked. If you have more information that can be summarized in three minutes, please provide leave behind materials for the boards of review. The moderator will ask you to conclude your remarks at the time of the last. If you have questions during the session, you may ask for clarification from your school board member or a school mentor after meeting is adjourned. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda for the seat?
I move to adopt the agenda.
A motion is filed in the second row. Any comments? Call in favor, aye? Aye, close no. Mr. Water, report from our board of days. Can you introduce yourself to everybody just to make sure everybody sees your name and your school name? No contact?
Push the plug on.
I have to click on.
Is there any... Thanks for figuring that out. No?
It's there.
Yes, there it is. Thanks for that.
You're welcome. Thank you. Hi, I'm Nate McEverry. I am the student's coordinator right here at the County High School. Great. So, every Monday, the band is together for evening rehearsal. So they will continue with that throughout every Monday. And so the marching band is over and they switch over to concert band. On the 2nd of this month, Virginia Tech and Radford. We took a trip to Virginia Tech and Radford for a college trip. So we were able to see both Virginia Tech and Radford in the same day. And I was on that trip. It was a lot of fun. I love Virginia Tech. Senior makeup picture days were also on the first of this month. The eighth graders were able to go to Dun for their field trip on the 2nd. Makeup picture days for our classmates were on the 4th. Last week, there was early release on Rockville Road. And because of parent teacher conferences, they were held on that same day and the next day. There's also a football game that night, that Friday night, where senior class is selling fried Oreos to support the senior class for their trip to Florida now. I'm actually the president of my class. So we're going to Tampa Bay, Florida for a senior trip.
Wow.
SATs for this past Saturday here. And students are working on the mural, I believe, outside of the school. So I see students going on my class so that they can help paint this mural. There's a resume workshop during the first and fourth block. And I'm in fourth block, so I'm a part of that resume building. So it's where we form resumes for when you apply to jobs. PSATs are tomorrow along with Leo Club. We have a road cleanup on Rockville Road. So I will be there tomorrow. For the three hours we'll be working, so that's a good time. There's a band news for me on the 11th of this month. The band has a competition on the 13th at Wootton High School. There's also on that same day, a chili cook-off that the Lions Club is sponsoring. It's for fundraising. The seniors are forming a bake sale on the 14th, a Sunday, at the Shell Station to support senior class. The band has a Christmas sale on the 15th of this month. The end of the first time meet is the 17th. The NHS is sponsoring a blood drive on the 18th. Power football game has been moved to the 19th of this month because of scheduling issues, rain. Senior mock interviews will be performed on the 20th, 30th, and 30th. NHS and Leo Club will continue their monthly meetings on the 4th, Wednesday, and even along with other pride meetings that are happening. Parental College is coming here on the 24th. Fall writing SLOs are starting on the 24th through 25th. Yearnight football game is on the 26th of this month. And if you go to marching assessment, marching band assessment is on the 27th of this one. Elementary aid workshop is from 6 to 8 on the 29th. There's a Pride Bash. So that's involving all the clubs here at Grab the Henic on Halloween. And we're gonna have games and involve the clubs. And I want to talk a little bit about my personal project that I'm doing. So I'm gonna put glucose gel in every one of the classrooms here for type 1 diabetics specifically. Because since I'm type 1 diabetic, I felt I wanted to do a project to appetite. So I've been talking to Mr. Stone there and I'm contacting Valley Health. So we may look into that.
Very happy to hear that. Very happy to hear that. And for donations?
Tracy Eisenman donated $200 for the student breakfast lunch accounts that are in need. Amber Welch donated a clarinet to the band program. Nathan Welch donated a saxophone to the band program. Janet Roby donated a saxophone and... to the band program. Trinity, the school church donated $1,325 to the discretionary fund to assist student learning. Audrey Antoni donated $200 for the varsity police baseball.
Thanks.
You might want to mention that in their letter, they requested information on volunteering. So it might be an opportunity for headwaters to tap into the...
Who votes the Trinity? The Trinity letter?
Yeah.
They're looking... Can provide a copy of that letter, please.
Looking for opportunities to volunteer.
Just following up. Here's what I'll go, your pastor sent you this letter.
Yeah, yeah. So I was thinking the same thing.
Donations are wonderful.
Wow.
A lot. Is there a motion to adopt the minute September 11th meeting? Salute. Have a motion, Mr. Rose, or second?
Second.
Second. Ms. Meyer? Any comments? Call in favor, aye? Aye, close no. So, or Mr. Rose, did you have a chance to?
I did.
Read the bills?
I did. I had one question. We, in the bills, there was a bill. And I was wondering if we pay the entire amount of that or if you... Let's see if you take a part of that. I don't know where that came from.
That was for the formation or...
Of our employees.
Right.
For contracts and things generally that we are generating, that comes out of our money. So it did come from our school board attorney hours.
And... We shouldn't expect them to take part of that. Probably not.
Their legal department had in-kind contributions to that, the people on their board that do some of that. But, you know, we... I wanted to run it through our attorney just to be sure the school board's covering them too. So that's an appropriate expense, I think, for that line. Any contracts that we generally draw, we can send over to a body on...
I mean, he's basically protecting our interests and making sure.
Yes, absolutely. From the school board perspective. So it's our best interest to make sure that...
Okay.
Thank you.
The only bill we have from the U T U.
That's a good thing.
I did reduce that line.
I did note that, by the way.
All right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Salute.
We have a motion. That's Biden, is her second, sorry. You call your Chris, I'll call you. It's Ruben, it's Ruben. Call in favor, aye? I'll for something. Aye. Aye. I'm writing on this slide. Slap off into... Ladies? Motion carries. Reports of superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. October is designated by BSBA as the bullying prevention month. So in that spirit, our school psychologists and elementary school counselor Kathy Zer Rhodes and Candy Llama will present on our Obaes program and some happenings in the school to celebrate October. Ladies, have the podium and I'll bring up your presentations.
Thank you for this opportunity to discuss a topic I care deeply about. First, I'd like to share the results of student surveys regarding bullying. We'll start with the little ones. In the spring of 2018, 152 students in grades kindergarten, first, and second grades completed the Good Citizen Survey. And it looked like this, as you see on the screen. Can you go to the next slide, please? Also, keep in mind that when we do surveys with very young children, we want to interpret them with a grain of salt because of their maturity and understanding of the questions. So these students were asked these questions. You can see the little left. The ones that received the highest percentages, meaning that students responded yes to the questions, were, one, are classmates nice to you? Two, do classmates use kind words? And five, do you feel safe in your school? The one with the lowest percentage was, do students take fun about us? But you can see under the column, yes, that most of our students expressed positive regard for their classmates in our school. The next slide. We asked second graders, what is a bully? And most of their responses had to do with someone being mean. Several students said they are super mean and teasing, that type of thing, and a few more aggressive types of behaviors. And the next slide, please. Where does bullying take place? Again, this is what I was asked of the second graders. And most of them said the bus or recess playground, unstructured types of activities. Okay? And now I'd like to talk about the survey results for older students. And as you may know, the Obaes bullying prevention program was implemented in 2011. So we've been doing this for a while. Students in grades three through 12 completed the Obaes bullying questionnaire in the spring of 2018. So 55% of students in grades three through 12 completed the online survey. So I'm gonna show you some charts. The data chart summarizes results based on grade and gender. So the blue represents girls and the green represents boys. And you notice there are some small diamonds in the middle and those represent the national comparison group. And what I'm gonna speak to this evening is comparing our students with our students from 2011 until the present. So I think it's good just to look at local norms. So we'll start with grades three through seven here. Compared with 2011 results, fewer sixth grade boys reported having been bullied two to three times a month or more. More third grade students and more girls in grades six and seven reported being bullied. Next, please. At the high school level, compared with 2011, the percentage of students who reported having been bullied decreased with two exceptions. More girls in 10th and 12th grades reported being bullied. Next. Students who have bullied other students. Compared with 2011, fewer sixth and seventh grade students and boys in third grade reported having bullied other students. More third and fourth grade girls reported bullying other students. Next. The high school. In 2011, 9% of girls in grades eight through 12 indicated that they had bullied another student two different times a month or more. In 2018, results showed that 0% of girls in grades eight through 12 did this. Fewer eighth, ninth, 10th, 11th grade boys reported having bullied other students. So overall, as I taught you, you'll notice that the boys have made a lot of progress in terms of reducing bullying since 2011. Okay, so this slide shows ways of being bullied. And you can see, if you look at the chart, the bars that reach to the right, that the ways that are most often, that students report as the most often ways of being bullied are verbal, rumors, exclusion, and that was the same with boys and girls. The next slide, please. At the high school, the results were similar. So those are the top three ways. The next two slides show where bullying occurs. And whenever we do this survey, we look at this carefully because, you know, we're talking about supervision. So this kind of lets us know what areas we want to focus our attention on in terms of supervising students. So you go to the next slide and the next, please. So this is the one that I really pay attention to, telling others about being bullied. When compared with 2011, more students in grades three through seven told others about being bullied and fewer told nobody. So you can imagine how important this is. We really can't respond if we don't know what's happening. So they are telling. So to give a specific example, in 2011, 32% of the elementary group told nobody. And in 2018, only 16%. So I feel like that's a very positive step. The next slide, please. At the high school level, responses from girls and boys buried on this question. More boys and girls reported bullying and fewer boys told nobody. So that's a positive. More students in grades eight through 12 told siblings or friends about being bullied than teachers, parents, or other adults. Next, please. And now we're in the area of reactions from the peer group. This slide shows the percentage of students who respond that they tried to help the bullied student if they see or learn that a student their age is being bullied. More students reported that they tried to help a bullied student. The next slide shows the high school. More male students reported that they tried to help a bullied student. Next, please. Interventions from teachers. More students at the elementary school reported that teachers spoke to them about their bullying others. Interventions by adults at school. This is elementary school again. I didn't have a high school slide because there wasn't any bullying reported. So interventions by adults at school. A similar percentage of students reported that school staff tried to put a stop to it when students being bullied. So that was similar than to it was in the beginning. At the high school level, slightly more students reported that school staff tried to put a stop to it when students being bullied. Okay, so looking at all this data, what does it mean? I shared the survey results with the faculty at both schools in September and suggested the following ways to strengthen their program based on the data that I shared. More girls and boys reported bullying and being bullied by others. So we want to reinforce positive connections and social skills among the girls. Be proactive, provide reminders of social expectations prior to unstructured activities. And when we have class meetings at elementary school, we want to facilitate discussions about appropriate ways to respond to verbal complaints and rumors. And then the last one on this slide, verbalize our efforts to address bullying behaviors. This is kind of a challenge because when bullying happens, we handle things confidentially and especially related to discipline. So other students may not see or be aware of the fact that we are addressing bullying. So, you know, perhaps we need to be more verbal about what we're doing without naming names, of course, or signaling anybody up. Then at the high school level, some of those are similar. Look for ways to reduce potential for bullying during class. Build a strong classroom community and a positive supportive classroom climate should follow. Always supervision is important, as always, this has been important for a long time. Most of the girls who reported being bullied indicated that they were bullied by other girls. So good talking points in our conversations with students would be how to respond to rumors, exclusion, cyberbullying among girls. Encourage problem solving among students, respect for differences and empathy. And then my other point is that more students in grades eight through 12 told siblings or friends about being bullied than adults. Be prepared to support students in this upcoming month collaborating with our colleagues on how to respond when students report bullying of peers because we're gonna hear about that probably more than students reporting themselves. And lastly, I want to say that bullying is a complex issue. We read about it all the time and especially it's an issue for social media, it's a big concern. In spite of this, improvement has seen in most areas of the questionnaire since we implemented the Obaes program. Now I'd like to say thank you to our teachers and staff for the following. Raising awareness about bullying, preventing bullying through their conversations and lessons with students, providing guidance to students on how to handle difficult social situations, stopping bullying when they see it happening, and most importantly, developing safe caring relationships with students that allow them to feel comfortable telling them when they are bullied or someone they know is being bullied. Thank you for your attention and patience with my data charts. Candy Llama, our elementary guidance counselor, will tell you about our October bullying prevention month activities.
Thank you. Like Dr. Rosely said, October is National Bullying Prevention Month. And we have developed over, well, for the past 11 years, we've supported activities to celebrate this month. And again, we've developed some activities to use at all grade levels and weekly themes to guide our efforts to continue to combat bullying. We started out by dividing the month into the four weeks. And each week, there was a theme. The first week, the theme is, was, I should say, we started that, was friendship and fun. And one of the activities that we encouraged was for the children to read a book about friendship. And I started it off by reading up a picture book and morning announcements to use as a jumping off point for class meetings for discussion. And it was a very simple, clear story called "Yes, I Can", but it could develop discussion with any grade level. And it was about teasing and making fun of others. So that's how it started. Also, week one, we tried to collaborate with other disciplines. So Amy Brady will lead a collaborative art project. Students will be decorating a feather to add to a large mural during art class. And the mural will show a beautiful word with outstrished means and the message, "No Place For Hate". And it's coming along and I think it'll be a beautiful... It's a display. Week two, the message was about making and keeping friends. And during those weeks, we provided activities for the class teachers to use during their class meetings. Children love to have something to take home, an object lesson to go along with what they've talked about. So we've helped the teachers by giving them activities to use in their classrooms, like, for instance, Kids Against Bullying coloring book for the younger children. I have a little copy here. So everybody has a template of that if they'd like to use it. Helping them out a little bit. We also have kindness catchers, which I remember these when I was in school and the kids love these things to get. So all of them have a little template. And it's about what to do if, how to support, or how to act, or how to show respect. And so each of them have something like that to do, to take home. Like I said, children love to have something to go along with the lesson. Also, we want to give a reminder about our buddy bench at the elementary school. We have a buddy bench and to remind them how it works. And here's how it works. If you're sitting on the bench, you are looking for a friend. And when someone asks you to play, to join them, always remember that you might want that opportunity, to take that opportunity. If you're looking at the bench and somebody's standing there, then you need to go over and offer to be friends to them. It's not just to sit and rest or take a time out because we want it to really have some meaning so they know what it's about. Let's see. Also, for the upper grades, sixth and seventh graders, we've put together some bullying prevention videos that the teachers can use in their classrooms to generate a greater discussion. The week three is Spirit Week. And on your, I think each of you have a green flyer and that's an example of our Spirit Week. Monday, turn your back on bullying, wear clothes that are backwards. Tuesday, everyone counts, wear a shirt with a number on it. Wednesday, Unity Day, we'll talk a little bit more about that in detail. Thursday, mix and match, mix and match your friend list, like sit with somebody different at lunch or at, when you are in groups, pick somebody different to be in your group. And Friday is wear a tie or tie dye, tie dye shirt. And that's to tie a knot for each other. So that's part of week three. And for the younger children, everybody's gonna be wearing orange that day, hopefully. And for the younger children, again, we made these little crowns that they can wear, these little unity crowns. Just something they like to do. Okay, and then the last week, we talked about take a pledge and sign up to commit to not being a bully and being a friend. And so each of the children will take, this is the elementary level, will take a little pledge that, "I am a kid against bullying, I will speak up when I see bullying, reach out to others who are bullying, and be a friend whenever I see bullying", things like that. Let me see. Cover up this stuff. Kathy, you were gonna talk about the Start With Hello?
Did I cover up your stuff?
I don't know how many of you are aware of Sandy Book Promise. This is an organization born in the aftermath of the tragedy in Newtown, Connecticut. And they developed the concept of Start With Hello Week to create a culture of inclusion and encourage youth to reach out and include those who may be dealing with chronic social isolation. So during the week of September 24th through 28th, we implemented activities to support social connectedness. At the elementary school during that week, students wore Hello name badges. They were given Start With Hello bracelets. And they wore those another day. Another day, each student was given a smiley face sticker to give to another student to brighten their day. At the high school level, high school students and staff wrote positive quotes, personal messages, and affirmations on sticky notes and placed them on the classroom doors. And then peer mentors visited RCES and interacted with students during their lunch periods on two days. And the next slide should show a picture of that. And I have to say, I peeked in the cafeteria and there was a young man, I think it was in sixth grade, who I've known for years to be very withdrawn.
in sixth grade, who I've known for years to be very withdrawn and kind of more, kind of a loner. He's liked by the students, but he doesn't reach out very much, and he was talking this young lady's ear off from high school. They also participated in their own Spirit Week activities related to that. And I feel like Start With Hello Week ties in beautifully with our October activities. And I want to say thank you, Dr. Grimsley, for bringing this photo to our attention. I want to add to October activities, she talked about the elementary school and at the high school level, they're planning to celebrate Unity Day along with us by wearing orange and wearing orange ribbons, I believe. And then also, we'll be sharing those video links with them with some upbeat information for our high school kids. And then the peer mentors are going to come down again and visit us, it was such a success. At this time, they're going to visit with some of our younger students and do interactive activities, kind of like team building activities in the oxygen, so I'm sure the kids will really enjoy that.
And the last slide is on our Unity Day. And Unity Day was started by Pacer's National Bullying Prevention Center in 2011. And we've been participating in it for at least three years now, right? And we are celebrating Unity Day on Wednesday, October the 24th by wearing orange. We are coming together in one giant orange message of hope and support. Wearing orange sends the message to our school, rappahannock counting, our country, and even the world that we care about each other and believe that no child should ever experience bullying. And we, oh, that's our bullying poster. And those are free, we can order those from the, and they have both in English and Spanish, so we present those in our school. And we have a, the children are going to get, each classroom is going to get an orange ribbon, and they're going to, as a class, put it somewhere in the school. And then we have one to offer to each one of you if you'd like to share in that day. And as you can see, we've branched out from just the basic Olveas program, which is the basic foundation, but we also saw a need to branch out and be proactive in involving character education and team building and teaching empathy and social skills and kindness. So each year, we try to incorporate a little bit more. And I don't know if you know, but Kathy and I have kind of taken our show on the road. This summer, we were asked to go to Clark County and train new teachers with Olveas, and it was a rewarding experience for us. It was a refresher for us, but also very rewarding to see the energy in that group. It was about sixteen teachers. But also, they were amazed at what our county was doing. And that's a testament to rappahannock county, and I thank you for all your support and help.
Can you hang on for a second? Are you any questions?
No, I mean, fabulous. If you start them in kindergarten or preschool or move on, it's a much friendlier atmosphere.
I think bearing it is really good, you know, it's nice that you're doing different things here nearby here, because they pay attention to it, it's different.
Do you have any, so fifty-five percent were the, all of your metrics were based on fifty-five percent response from our student body, is that correct? That's what I heard.
We chose to do that. We, actually, when we began the program, we had Representative Richmond, who was kind of our mentor and trainer, if you remember that when we did the initial training, and Katie Moffett. And so as we went through, we had done the survey a few times, and she advised us that we did not need to poll the entire student population, that we could do fifty percent. So that's why I've been using that guideline.
So I was wondering how you, you know, how do you figure out which fifty percent?
You take a random sample?
When you, yes, when we, we're given pages of random numbers, of random passwords, and then Janet Robie goes to the class list and just randomly, yeah, Gabe Deal and Janet Robie are a big help in implementing that, but yeah, we just kind of randomly pick.
Interesting data. I guess, you know, disappointing to see the national average and where we are, the national average. It's still disappointing, but it's the truth. So we're managing, best we can manage the truth about changing culture.
That's right.
I was kind of surprised at the girls reporting being bullied more by girls than boys, kind of like seeing the middle school boys especially get kind of more aggressive with girls.
As I said, it's very complex and there are lots of factors involved. One thing I've been thinking about in some of my reading recently as well is that when we were in school, if we were being bullied, we'd go home and we'd feel safe at home. And now because of social media, we're bullied twenty-four seven, there's no escape, and girls tend to be more talkative and chatty about their feelings and opening themselves up.
Girls will do it off campus, boys will come to it in rather quickly.
Right there.
And they'll either stay apart or have a fight and be done, but girls will go at it for years apparently. And they are very vindictive on social media, we need a little bit of work.
I'm sure there's more to it than that, I mean, it's a simplistic idea, but that's my thought.
And just throwing this out to you, as our mental health group gets together, we've been talking a lot about the social media aspect and how we can address some of those issues.
I think that parents would like to get more information, just about, especially like when we're younger, we have younger kids, they seem to be more keen on understanding development of the kids, but when they get to teenagers, it's harder to understand what is a social norm that's appropriate with a social norm. It changes so fast.
We are thinking.
Yeah, it'd be interesting, even to figure out how to reach out to these parents who are less engaged.
And we're open to any thoughts or ideas.
It could be a really good topic for a PTA, I would say.
And we had some parents in the community too that were talking to us at our safety meeting about all the tools that they can put on their phones to help monitor social media at home. And we have some pretty good parents, they're very avid at using those things, and it'd be great to have them maybe lead a professional development for our other parents who, you know, don't know what that means, you know, to come in and learn from their peers about how to deal with that and monitor at home, because a lot of them would love to, but just don't know how to utilize those apps and things that they can.
If there were a list of suggestive, even just if there was on, sort of, I think the high school is going to have a form of a Tuesday folder to have sort of a list of parents. That would be really, because I think people may be less likely to come to a meeting, but they would, they would look at.
Well, they might come to a meeting if they knew what the topic is, far enough advanced.
Or some modules, we're playing with the idea of doing role modules for parents too as well, so they can click on the link and watch a two-minute video on those. Those are very digestible, quick, easy, and you don't have to come out.
The ones that are already dealing with their children and keeping an eye on their behaviors is the ones that let the internet or the TV babysit their children that don't realize the far reason, I assume we already do, but it'd be nice to remind those students that you're not just faceless behind a keyboard, you can easily be you and other consequences. Those are the ones that generally we see the problem with. Because it's a lot easier to say something about you through here, their face to face. You don't realize how far they go.
And they even have to remember the first three-way come calls. They were the worst there was.
Is this one of those telegraph stories?
What's that?
Morse code. All right. Thank you, ladies. Three-way long board, and I'm glad.
The only ones on it, but they still have it, they won't give it up, it's like fifteen, but it's not there.
And Clark County just loves these ladies so much, they want to bring them back for other trainings and everything, though, they contacted me and said, wow, really good, we need to bring them back, they were so good, so thank you for that. Okay, next item on my reports is that SIPA policy review. I'm not going to sit here and read it to you, but it is loaded for your perusal, and we publicly say that you reviewed it, so.
Yes.
You read it, right?
Yes, we all read it.
And I trust you, you all read, that's wonderful. That was a funny story, yeah. In the minutes we record that we read the policy. Everyone all set? Excellent. Okay, so four point three is a calendar modification that we're coming to you to request. We, because of our deluge of all that rain, we missed our professional development day that did have some required trainings that our staff does need. So we are asking, also at the request of the principals, that we change the student day on November second to be a full day off for students and hold our professional development day. We had some other outside presenters coming in and that we have some federal mandates that have come down that we just really need to get to our staff, and they do take quite a bit of time. It's not as simple as just pulling in a faculty meeting and saying, we do need a six-hour timeframe to get everything in. So instruction looks good, benchmarks are looking okay, so we feel comfortable with doing that, and the principals brought it to teachers as well, so we feel comfortable bringing that modification to you in our first semester.
That is our only action item. Any questions about that?
Me either, no, my instruction pages, but.
You know, we don't make up days that we, that we have snow days. And what happens if we have four more snow days and wear whatever? I hate losing instruction. I'd almost rather see, see us paid teachers come in on Saturday or something and do it as a paid day.
This was originally a half day. It was a full day.
It's a full day.
It was a full day at school.
Where does it put us in terms of?
We have ten days bank time, so we've only used one, so we should be just fine. We'll keep our eye on it after ten days, we don't know what kind of winter we'll have, but first semester is generally easier on instruction. I'd rather, much rather if we were to do it during first semester than second. But there's things that we are federally bound to it, and our calendar committee is discussing that change to have a required PD at the start and take one of those workdays back to ensure that we can get that. But it was a, seemed to be a safe time to have ours, you know, beginning your training just happened, and we had a hurricane come through, so, you know, let's control those. September seems to be pretty safe for us.
You have no idea what winter is.
We don't. Well, we'll have eight days, and then we have the opportunity to make up days during spring break if we need to.
All right. So I just, this would count as one of those days. This is counted as a makeup day. This counts as a day towards the bank days.
Towards the bank days.
Yeah, we'll count those out. We have eight.
I think that's the only way I could.
Definitely, oh, that counts as a day, and after eight, then we'll have to get back, and we'll need them second semester. Our next item, Assistant Superintendent Carol Johnson will come to the podium and talk to you about a new suicide prevention regulation.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to talk about an update to school board policy. You have in your board docs a copy of the regulation that we've attached to the policy JHH. One of the most difficult tasks that a staff member can have is to be asked to address a report that a student is feeling as though he or she wants to harm him or herself. The challenge in this situation is twofold. First and foremost, the staff must ensure that the student is safe. However, staff also need to document the situation and ensure that appropriate steps are taken to provide the student with the supports necessary to help them become emotionally stable. In these situations, a process must be in place that can be implemented quickly to help assess the student's emotional state. While our original school board policy JHH gave a very general overview of what the schools need to do in these situations, it did not provide a guideline for the specific assessment of situations where students threaten self-harm. I myself have tried to support staff in the past using just the policy JHH, and it left some things to be desired as far as providing the appropriate supports for the student. With attendance at regional CPMT meetings, we were able to make connections with other school divisions who had specific regulations for this policy that we were able to adapt for use in our county. So last year, our school formed a team of counselors, the school psychologist, the lovely ladies who just presented to you, as well as administrators, and we worked together to clarify the steps that needed to take place in these situations. So at this point in time, the regulation outlines that all reports of suicidal ideation from a student are to be forwarded to the school guidance counselor. The counselor takes the process from there and begins with an interview of the person who is making the report, and then they move on to the student to do an interview with them. Suicide risk assessment summary sheet is then completed, and if you'll look to the other slide, you have a copy of the document. And this is basically, I just can't. Okay. So the suicide risk assessment summary sheet is basically a checklist that we can work through with the student. Over on the left side are the items that would guide the interview with the student, and then the counselor is able to assess the student as being at a low-risk presentation, a medium risk, or a high risk. Low-level risk is reported to the parent with an option for a safety plan to be developed by the school staff or to implement in school counseling. A student who would be deemed at a medium risk would result in a parent pickup for professional assessment as well as a formal safety contract for the student, where the student develops their own list of trusted adults that they can turn to if they are feeling or experiencing ideas related to self-harm. A high-risk assessment will obviously result in a parent pickup for immediate evaluation. If that is not able to happen, then we are able to work with the community services board for a rapid intake assessment, possible transport to the ER by the sheriff's office. The student will additionally have a safety plan that is developed by the staff upon his or her return to school to be sure that everyone on staff is aware of how they can support the student and to give the student, again, those trusted adults that they can turn to. This process allows for documentation of threats of self-harm that gives the staff a record in which they can look back to determine if there are patterns of student reports over a period of time. Additionally, it provides a system of support that ensures that everyone involved with the student is made aware of the concerns. We are very fortunate to have the support of our contracted partners, the National Counseling Group, who can assist us with this process, both in our schools and also through their emergency contact information. They were willing to let us have personal phone numbers of their counselors that can be used 24 hours a day that we can give to students so that they have someone to call if they feel that they are in crisis. So while we are hopeful that we won't have to put this regulation to much use, it is good to have a definitive process in place that will help us to assist our students should the need arise.
The regulation, so based on the process, the counselors in each of the schools will have one of these basically to guide them?
Yes. Yes, they already have it.
How do we communicate that? How do we communicate that with parents?
If this process is in. How do we communicate this with parents that the process is in place? That was a question I think.
Right now, it's, it's going to be communicated as a regulation in the school board. Um, typically, the guidance counselor is the one who is making the parent aware of the situation when it occurs at school with the student. I don't know if we want to make this a.
We did make mention to it in our safety forum, but it wasn't that well attended, but, um, we, we will draw attention to it, especially in this.
I mean, we could put it in a, just a little bird or something.
Well, it could be one of our required postings that we put on the website for parents.
Did we make it into the handbook this year? I don't think. I think we had it done after the printing, but it will be an item in the handbook.
What happens if the parent says no?
That's kind of my question. How well are we communicating to the parent the threats there? Is a child going to be allowed to come back without seeking attention? Because if, if, if we, where I work, if we get it and it's enough to make us go, mm, then we give them two choices. Either they can go with mom or dad or husband or wife and get voluntary treatment, which you're going to have to go, or we take it. So, if God forbid the parent thinks junior's full of it, I'm not taking junior anywhere. Do we have a backup? Do we get notified? Do we let somebody know?
That is when the school division can, um, request the transport of the student with the school resource officer on the recommendation of the community services.
Yeah, so I mean, if, if we call dad, dad comes and gets him and says, oh, no, I'm not taking him anywhere. He's going to go home, he'll be back on Monday.
Well, if you notice in the level, if it's a level three, which is considered a high risk threat, um, we are requesting a report from the physician that has examined the student and released the student.
Before you can return to.
More than likely that a child would not be returning to school without that report.
Two, I mean, one, I would assume is random statements or whatever, but two would, uh, would, to me, would require some kind of a.
But then.
Just hey, you know, make sure Johnny's okay. Three, Johnny, Johnny might need treatment. Two, Johnny needs me, make sure Johnny's okay, we get to the bottom of it. Just to, to, you know, from what I've dealt with, it, uh, it wouldn't hurt. I was, uh, I was thinking, you know, it is, it will be on the website by virtue, it's in the blog. But I don't think people goes, people will go to the website as much as, websites are becoming like, you know, the last decade kind of thing. Things such as social media is where people get the majority of information. And so it could be that we need to figure out how to inform people through social media sites.
If people look at Facebook every single day.
Right, they, they don't go to our website.
Right.
I don't go to their website. But I see Facebook, it's in my face, right? So maybe that's kind of a.
Maybe just a, or even, you know, if, some way, so it's not startling, you know, so it's not. But it's, it's a, it's a focus or it's a, uh, something that we're looking at because it's important to look at.
It's part of our advancement of student safety.
Safety, there you go.
This option and steps are now available and being used. If the parent, the documentation of what Johnny or Jill had to say, they don't get the name of the child that reported them or the parent or whatever, right? All this.
No, and actually, what we said in the regulation was we were going to give them a copy of the risk assessment sheet, so.
But you got to make sure you go over steps or. I mean, I'm a little on the parent's side and I'm thinking of myself, if you fall and say, and I, I want.
And you always have the option to get a professional opinion, go and see a, um, a release, but we also have the obligation to provide an education. But that doesn't mean it's in the general, like, mainstream classroom. It may mean, okay, well, we can put, do an alternative plan until we get the documentation we need to release your child into the general population.
We have a hundred and ten other children we also have to be worried about.
Exactly. I know. What sort of bothers me is you're taking the role of the parent away from the parent. And if it's legit, it's fine, but suppose you make a mistake, which is human, then that parent is on the defensive and that, so, you know, what do you want to do to prevent that?
Overall, the experiences that we've had with this situation, um, it, it's very alarming to parents to, to have this report at all, no matter who the parent is. We've never had a parent argue with the request to, to have their child taken for an assessment. Now, what happened after the assessment, um, and what the parent's perception of it was, you know, that, that could vary, but the parents do take this report seriously and have followed through and have their child seen by a healthcare professional, mental health care professional.
Most parents don't pick up on it or, because the child doesn't let them know. They'll tell their friends, that's how we get it, or you guys are going to get it.
Or it shows up on social media.
Or parents assume, oh, he'll grow out of it, or it's a fad, or it's a phase. They don't pick up on it because you assume the best about your kid. It's when they tell Billy and Johnny and Johnny tells Suzie and Suzie goes, that doesn't sound right.
Tells her mother.
She tells mom and mom calls in. We get that too and most, and it's not, it would be hard to make a mistake. You, you would, you would be more likely to make a mistake by not taking it serious than you would by taking it serious because the ER doctor is just as likely to say, you need to be seen or you don't, as Reverend and Service Board, God bless them. Um, it's, it's, it's not so much taking the parents, for me, taking the parent's place as, hey, Johnny's got some issues, he probably didn't tell you about it because for them to get to that level with us, they've got to say something. It's not Johnny's moody, it's Johnny said he was thinking about, he couldn't take this anymore. Johnny or Jill said, you know, I, I wish I wasn't here anymore. They've got to make a, 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 you know, they've got to take a picture of them with a weapon. It's pretty, they've got to say a comment about harming themselves, they had faults or whatever. It's not, I would assume, or they have not just in the core moody, it's wack. There's, there's some kind of a, a, a level to it.
Which is the reason we have the three leveled assessment process for.
Because we all say things like, ah, I can't say anything more. Doesn't mean I hurt yourself, but for some people it does. It's not a bad thing. It's a good way to go to, to, to get ahead of before we get involved.
But I think we need to be proactive and let folks know that this is, this is a, an issue. It's an issue nationwide. Uh, teen suicide is rising every day.
And it's a great time to communicate it with October being bullying prevention and bullying is one of the leading causes of suicide among people. So it would be a good time to communicate our procedures that have been updated to.
I know if it worked, there, there's been several kids that have called us, or parents, the parents have called us and they're like, oh my God, he's going to hate me or this, that, or whatever. And I, for me and the guys that work with me, nah, you know, you did the best thing you could. He might be a little mad that, that you kind of broke his trust, but you did the best thing you could because if you are his friend, you did exactly what you did because this is, you know, this is going on. Um, it's not a bad thing at all if you're, I don't know about bullying, was that a bad thing? As, as far as student health and safety?
That's it.
It's a lot more other than you think. A lot more with the, the bullying with the girls.
Even, even with bullying as a, who do you talk to? A teacher, you talk to a parent, you talk to somebody.
That's why the mentor program is so fantastic with the older kids, often with younger kids, as long as you get good kids. Um, the role model, they do, they look to a model or something, look to the seniors he hung out with in wrestling and different things as a role model. Some were good, some weren't, but it's, you know, they take them under their wing, they build them up. You got a partner and somebody to look to, it's eighth grade, you're scared to death. It's a great thing. I think, I think there's a whole, we've come a long, long way here with that. Sorry.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Okay. Four point five, children's savings accounts. Now you remember, sorry. Last time I teased you a little bit and I'm going to tease you a little more tonight. Um, so. I have this kind of a dream, okay, so I'm going to do the whole dream thing. We're having, there's this idea of a project that we've been talking about, um, myself included. It actually came up in a Headwaters board meeting. That's how it first sparked the idea. Um, happened at a Headwaters meeting and, uh, actually our next step director, Kat Habib, that brought her neighbor who's also an asset builder and had, um, some experience with these types of accounts because the, um, Kat's frustrations in the next step program were finding resources that persist throughout post-secondary experiences as well as finding additional resources for students who may not qualify all the time for some of those scholarships that are offered. Um, so looking for multi-year scholarships and also gap funding and things like that for, um, those children who may qualify, but then there's this big chunk that's left for student debt and other things. So, um, other states have used a children's savings account model to help with that and, um, serve that inequity among those, um, those types of children. So, um, basically what is a children's savings account? It's a long-term custodial savings account that's open for very young children. Grandparents do this all the time and they're really good at it. I'm going to start you off right and I'm going to give your child a, a savings account as soon as they're born. My grandma sent my, my children savings bonds every, every month for a while, um, until she passed away, but that's a great way to, you know, instill savings in young children. Um, and usually those kind of bonds or savings accounts, uh, they're not dispersed till after high school graduation. In the case of a children's savings accounts, they're set up that way so that, uh, when the child graduates, they can be used for post-secondary education or career development or workplace development needs or ID transportation or whatever you come up with as the fiduciary program. So that's what you can come up with. They're sometimes called early scholarships because that's kind of the, the idea behind them. Um, they combine seed deposits that start at an early age with subsequent incentives that children can earn money in their own accounts through different activities through school. Um, so that's the idea behind this. Um, why, again, Kat kind of sparked that idea in my mind and I immediately, at first it was a lot of unknown. It was something completely different than we had seen before. I'm like, I need to buy that, way more about this. And the more I read, the more it just kind of, I don't know, I'm getting a little righteously indignant about it because I'm seeing what it can do for our kids. And every mandate that keeps coming down from the state about profiling a Virginia graduate to now be life-ready, our whole K-12 landscape has changed. So it's no more about just college prep, college ready. That's what the whole focus was before. Which scholarship programs do a great job addressing those needs, but we have a whole slew of kids who are not being touched or impacted, impacted by scholarships that maybe don't qualify or more likely what Kat and I see in our guidance counselors, where it's just bending grained in them that mom and dad didn't say, we don't have that, forget that, you're going to have to go to work, find something else. And by the time we're addressing it in, as junior year or, you know, we're doing the academic career plans even in eighth, ninth grade, but by that time, that conditioned mentality from home is too late. It's just way too late. And now they may qualify for some of these scholarships and other, other things, but it's just, we've sparked the interest in sixth, seventh grade career exploration and college and I need, I can do this, but I want to go to William and Mary and I have to do this and that and this and that. And they get to junior year and say, whoa, there's no way I can come up with that or I'm going to borrow this whole bunch of money. And we're discouraging a lot of our kids that way. Um, the dignity of earning is a big deal with some of our kids. We're seeing, um, I don't want to accept that money. It's like a handout, very proud people saying, I don't, you know, I don't believe in that. I'm going to work my way up and, uh, which is a great thing to have, but tying something real to it would be nice, you know? They don't think filling out an application for a scholarship necessarily is, it is a great thing. And we want them to be thankful for that, but some of them view that as it's a handout, we don't do that. Or we don't fill out fast, but we don't want to accept government money. Or we don't, and we're seeing that too. It addresses this equity issue that we're having, again, with the haves, have-nots and those who qualify and are pushed at home and have that support that do go for every scholarship out there and do find a way to, to get there. But, um, we're trying to do as much as we can, but by the time we're, we're hitting most of that, it's high school. And that's not a very long period of time to develop the, the cash balances or, um, resources you may need to, to do everything you want to do. And what do we do in school? We tell our kids, you can do whatever you want to do. Well, not really, when you, when you see it, unless you want this huge mountain of debt on you and you want, you know, um, that's a tough thing. Filling that life-ready gap with the profile of a graduate connection. We want kids to be exploring these possibilities and understanding the plan, but we also want to engage families, um, with those financial planning decisions and advising. And that's a difficult thing to do in high school when they've already made up their mind and get discouraged because we've only got a couple of years left before graduation. There's no way I can handle that, that burden. And that's those conversations that are really heartbreaking when we're having them at that stage and seeing the, the fire go out in the kids' eyes that have all these dreams and then I get the one thousand dollar scholarship, that's great, but what about the other fifty thousand? I mean, um, you know, that's a tough thing. And I see it a lot and we've seen it a whole lot more now too with, um, the family dynamics changing and not so much stability as we would like to have. Our free and reduced lunch population is now over forty percent at the elementary school.
Is it a year?
Forty percent, over forty percent free and reduced lunch. Um, so that demographic, um, is an at-risk factor for not getting all those resources together by the time they, they hit college age. There's scholarships and grants and, but not all of them qualify for those evenings, so. Um, long-term investments, they allow for meaningful fund accumulation, encourage children and families to develop future orientation and a sense of personal agency early. And that is the, where I see this going. It's got to start in kindergarten. You can't start in junior year or high school. Um, research has shown that youth with five hundred dollars or less in a savings account are three times more likely to enroll in post-secondary education, four times more likely to complete it than those without, just five hundred dollars or less. So it's not really a lot of money at all. So, I've been picking this idea off of different people, stakeholder groups and things. Um, but basically what the goals, if I, if it were to work here, and other states do this, Maine does it for all of their children, um, to, to mitigate this. And there's other states. Yes, the state level does this in Maine. Um, but other states are using it as, certain foundations will step up and do this with school divisions and things. Um, Indiana, Ohio were a couple of models we looked at. So there are other models to base it on. But basically, the goals for a rapid-handic CSA program would be that every kindergarten student, when they enter and register, would get a hundred dollars in their own personal savings account in their, in their own name, just by registering. Every student will be actively involved in age-appropriate preparation for financial independence, saving for the future through this college savings account, which is a big, or, uh, children's savings account, which is a, um, one of those life-ready five Cs that we have to instill in our kids. Um, and one of our, the reasons that the state of Virginia has economics personal finance for the, um, all of high school grads because we have to help with that crisis. Our generation now is having, is struggling with financial planning and accumulating huge amounts of debt. Every child develops academic and personal skills for lifelong learning and career success in association with savings and financial capabilities. So now it's not just what are you dreaming about, it's how do you get there? And now you have some, something real to tie it to. And then number four, every child's family has access to trustworthy resources to build financial decision-making skills, starting in kindergarten. Because when you start there, I have eighteen years now rather than two. And when I dream for my child something I want them to be able to do, it looks a lot more possible in kindergarten when they're five than it does when they're sixteen, getting ready to graduate, and I didn't plan for that. Thirteen, I'm sorry, when they're eighteen years old.
I wonder how many years we're going to.
Thirteen years.
Raise them till they have kids.
No, no, sir. Um, so in thirteen years, I have a lot more capability, especially when I know that they're starting off at least with something in the school that will just accumulate. So where are we in this? Really, it's very preliminary. My goal would be to try to secure funding and, um, a fiduciary partner and a foundation to start kindergarten fall of 2019 with those initial, um, registrations. I've had some preliminary discussions and we've surveyed different stakeholder groups to see, educate about the idea and what do you think about this? Um, one demographic that we're really concerned about is our free and reduced lunch population and our students in poverty. Um, and we did survey that demographic, um, through Food Pantry. Um, and a hundred percent of them, there, there were thirty-five surveys that came back a hundred percent very positive. Um, and even said that we would love to be a part of planning this and helping support it. Um, we're also surveying our regular demographic too. We had a table of parent-teacher conferences trying to, um, educate about it and then, uh, get some feedback that way. It's also on social media. Um, we've had outreach to local foundations and potential donors and there's, you know, it's, it seems like some support, but it's hesitancy because it's so brand, it's so different here. We'd be the first place in the state to influence something like this. Um, we have some grant proposal documents in the works to try to get some grant funding for this. Um, there's interest, but again, I can't go any further until I have a foundation to be a fiduciary partner or local host. I guess I could, it just looked a little different if the public school were posting and dealing with all that funding. It's a lot better if you go through, uh, foundation, just how other models do it. Although, we are researching how that would look if the public entity took it on because we have seen that there seems to be quite a lot of. we have seen that there seems to be quite a lot of, um, donor support out there that would love to help with a project like this, but, um, we do need a foundation to be fiduciary partner or a local host. Um, so that's kind of where we're at. We, um, put together an FAQ document as we're, we're meeting with stakeholder groups and saying, okay, now shoot it down and tell us everything that's wrong with it and what questions we need to answer. And, um, gotten quite a few of those. Um, I shared it with my teacher advisory committee as well to see what the teacher perspective was, and they were overwhelmingly positive and loved this change because it's so much of their curriculum that we're already embedding in our math curriculum, economics, personal finance. Um, and they said they would absolutely use it in some of the, um, events that we do, especially like Market Day, Reality Store and those things. It fits nicely with what we already do. Um, but it also gives the kids something. It's not a lot of money initially to start. Um, every, to start every kid off, um, in kindergarten with a hundred dollars in their savings account plus the ability to earn a hundred dollars more is about 10,500 to seed those accounts.
Until, until you're four.
Hmm.
Until you're four.
Until you're four, when you're...
Yeah, it's gonna be...
You accumulate, um, but let's say if we did this, if we said in our school budget, like we support, you know, and I'm not suj-, we can do a lot of things. A sponsor could come on and say, I wanna sponsor a kindergarten class, here's your $10,000 check. Or two come in and do that. Um, or the school board could even say, we wanna put, we'll seed every kindergarten account and put 10,000 in, in our budget so at least they get that. It just accumulates over time. It's an option.
I, I'm just saying clear about the, you had, so you talked about kindergarten and then, then in first grade, they used the $500 also.
No, it's start, initially, it's just a seeded account in kindergarten of a hundred dollars with the ability to earn, hopefully, if we can get to that point, earn another hundred dollars each year. We can change that number.
So at the end of their senior year, they have 1,200 bucks in the account, on the middle, the middle.
Right. That's what I'm saying, it's not a lot.
So that's sixty kids of 1,200 bucks, times twelve.
Mm-hmm. Right. So that's why, I mean, it would take grant funding and some donors, which I feel like there is support there, um, but I need a partner to come on to help manage the accounts. And that's the harder, the harder part, cause jumping on board with that.
Are we using school funds for this or is it all gonna be funded through outside?
That's all discussion. I mean, if we wanna start it with just all outside third-party donor accounts and that's it, it can be. Right now, the school board does offer assistance and we give ninety dollars credit for anyone taking AP tests and doing enrollment. I wouldn't see it as very different as, as an early, um, program as part of our curriculum, what we do.
I would see that.
But that's part of the curriculum.
I would see that.
That would, I mean, that's part of the, that...
That's part of the education.
Uh, yeah. See, I'm not sure that we as a school system can see it back.
Mm-hmm.
We might not, I mean, for the taxpayers, I don't think, you know, when they pay, they wanna support education, and to me, it's the responsible, I mean, I think it's a nice idea if we don't have any obligation to the funding and I'm not sure we need to play...
Mm-hmm. And it, you don't need to, that's a school board decision.
Absolutely. I don't think you're asking, I mean, it can, it starts at one kindergarten, then at next kindergarten class, I mean, you could, you could, I don't know. To me, it sounds like it might cost us a lot of money.
Well, 10,000 a year, if we were to seed accounts, is all it would cost us, cause every year, then a new kindergarten gets there.
It's another ten.
That's, yeah.
They've already gotten it.
But they've already gotten it.
It's in the next.
Yeah, but they're getting the other, yeah, but they're getting their ten, you're getting the ten of second grade.
The next year.
And then the third grade.
No, that's not, that's not...
No, 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 every kindergarten class coming in.
It's not cumulative is what you're saying. It's a seed, it's a seed to get the account set up to make sure this kindergartner has a kickoff.
What happens in grade one?
They have, if, at the very least, they have what we set up initially. So they have a hundred dollars in their account that just accumulates that we can...
And as I grant you stuff, it says that every kindergarten gets a hundred, and then when they go to first grade, they'll get another hundred.
If we did...
When they go to second grade, they'll get another hundred.
That's dependent. It's dependent upon donors coming on board if they want to support that initiative. We can incentivize those.
Oh, I, I think you can.
Yeah. It's not about the money.
You, you make the account through a foundation. They manage it. People can make donations to it if they choose to. If the funding is there, kids can earn the money. Parents from whatever can also put money into it. It's sort of like, like the groom or wife or a thing. Um, grandparents can make a donation, correct?
Well, and I'm, I'm sort of against doing that because if we're dealing with equity, I don't want the haves, have-nots, inequity to happen, but what I would love to see...
Does it here, they can make...
They, they can, you have the capability, it can be open, but you can also limit that. So you can say, no, we don't take third-party donations from, from donor projects and stuff that the student earns only, yes? Or you could say, um, I'd like to incentivize children saving their own money that they've earned. I, I got five dollars in my allowance, I'd love to put it in and we do a match to that.
So we would say no if somebody wanted to put money in the kids' account?
No, we would direct them to a 529 account or something.
Right, it's about twenty-nine in Virginia, so that's the thing, and I'm, I'm looking at this and I'm...
Yeah, they return is higher on those.
So if somebody wanted to, to seed money to the account, we would say no?
You could, or we wouldn't say no to this account, but you could say, we would...
If we're trying to get, we're just able to get boosted on.
That's awesome that they wanna do that and maybe that we do. Maybe we do say that, but then what would happen is my mom is able to get 5,000 dollars every year and then my mom stays.
My, my mom's not, so I've gotta earn mine, that's, that's just life. But it is what it is. But the 529 gives us that already.
They already, yeah, it's obviously a program.
If you sign every kid up to a 529 as a kindergartner and let the parents deal with it, I think that's probably...
And then it's just for college though, and then that's the same.
Well, yeah, you can, you're ready to...
No, they're more flexible now, there's, there's different kinds of...
I can be a technical school and stuff.
Post-secondary education. We have a lot more flexibility with this and the teaching component, we have access to help.
I just don't think it's part of the school educational to be doing a bank. I mean, I don't see how you can get a, who's gonna regulate all these kids and how much money's in there?
What happens when they...
You work with a...
Marketing day, somebody to do it or what else he's gonna do?
We have, a bank actually does it.
It's in the FAQ.
Well, they're gonna take some kind of money or some kind of fee.
Oh, we, not, thanks, we care, education. Apparently they'll take it back. The only thing they keep is what they contribute. If they either use the seed money for education or it goes back into the, to the account, they don't get that. If parents wanna contribute from whatever, then they can withdraw that if they need.
Their own contribution, their own money.
But the money the school puts in is locked in for that child or the donors or whatever. It's not the management. I thought that was what the 529 was, I thought this was the 529 was for, the only thing I could see is most children are not starting in 529 kindergarten, it's not happening.
So because you're just putting the kids in kindergarten, you're not thinking about getting them out.
Right.
It's not a bad idea, but it's...
Most parents aren't, but if somebody wanted to say, I wanna give, it's not gonna be me. I wanna give 10 grand to the class of 2018 for their fun, hope to God, we would say, great, take it down to the Mike League, he can, he can, you know, everybody gets whatever. I hope God would not turn that away from anybody. Um, if somebody, you know, if great Aunt Millie wants to put 500 in Little Billy's, I don't, I don't see the problem with it, as long as we're not involved in any kind of financial responsibility, we're not locked into it, whatever. At the end of the school year, we had 10 grand left and we're looking to what we're gonna do with it.
That's taxpayer dollars.
It goes towards education, for it to hurt, goes towards education and it's locked in or for that use. For that use, if it's there. Just saying. So we need to be thinking about this a little more and, uh, and, uh, whether, you know, what's the role of...
I'd like to look at the main, do you have the main plan? The main, the main...
We had some things that we're putting together. Oh, you mean Maine, the state?
The Maine state.
We can send you that, yeah, yeah.
But they have to...
Yeah, and there's an implementation plan up in there.
It's bright and simple, cause I think it, it has, it has a lot of potential, but it also has a lot of fraud, you know, a lot of issues that if you don't deal with them upfront, then, then, uh...
That's why it's on the table.
I understand.
So, um, yep, so we'll, we'll need to, uh, consider options if we continue the conversation. We're, we're way ahead of...
But we're talking 2019, right?
Same, we're not way ahead. Well, we are way ahead as far as the conversation. The kindergarten, the fast, the present, in the forties, we're down to 811 county preschool.
Yeah.
We're not looking at massive amounts of stuff by the time these kids graduate.
Yeah.
We're gonna be shipping kids across the mountain at that point.
I'm sort of thinking, why can't we introduce them to the 522 or whatever?
529?
Not 529.
See, I was thinking, if the foundation...
That, that this is a good idea, but it's there.
Well, if we're gonna seed something, if we were gonna seed something, the foundation's gonna manage something, it would be kicking off a 529 for a clinical...
I'd, I'd be more inclined, I'd be more inclined to try to figure out a way to raise enough money for every senior to have 1,200 bucks, like, to walk out the door.
But then we miss the building the skills early for saving and the mentality of the real concept is not there.
Well, you do it, you do it paperwork. I mean, you do it as a, you say, this is what you're building for. You start from a zero and you get to 1,200 and then they're gonna guarantee you 1,200 bucks to start from.
And then you get out and go to a...
And then you got 12 years to go out and raise that money.
You can do that with 529 too, and that's what I do with my grandkids, which they, they know what they just got for Christmas.
Yeah, right. Well, mine know it too.
And they, and we talked about that.
They don't have a clue what the three of them don't know anything about it.
All figured out.
And some of those other issues with 529 that we've seen is the personal identifying information, parents don't need social security numbers, they wanna do that. This is a way that they don't need to.
Where's this money gonna be kept?
In a bank.
That doesn't require a social security...
The banks can be, it's an omnibus account under student names that do not need any identifying information other than the student ID number that we can use. We have three banks on board right now that wanna help. I just don't have a foundation.
The kids that would benefit the most from that are not living in the 529 world.
No, exactly.
By any means.
No.
They're not gonna get one, mom and dad aren't gonna get one, they're gonna resent you talking to them about it. It's a way to help those kids if we can keep the school from being locked into something that we potentially can't support every year or by decision, many years.
Yeah, this could be another board.
Then it would be a good idea if, if you can get somebody to work with you and man, help manage that and keep it out of the taxpayer pocket.
I agree with that, right.
And the school can choose to, if they wish, there's five grand left over because we got a surplus, instead of pushing it back, can we do that? Not saying we are, we're staying in our house building, flip out people, we're not building the bikes earlier.
No, you're not doing that.
All right, discussion. Thanks for the information.
That's great.
Um, let's continue, let's continue.
You can give me the main?
Yep, the main information, we can share around.
Yeah.
And, um, and, uh, we'll continue the discussion if things like...
Yes.
Was that the end of your presentation?
Yes, sir.
It was that?
All right. Uh, are we gonna move on?
Undone, yes.
Uh, Headwaters representative, update?
Yeah, Headwaters met and, um, well, there were three things that happened. The one, the first thing that happened in September with Headwaters was on the 20th, we had the STEAM museum that was really popular and we had everybody, um, it was, it was through a grant from Headwaters and all the elementary kids and myer came in the afternoon to, to volunteer. We had fifteen, twenty volunteers in all who came in from the community and parents and grandparents. And, um, all the kids got to go to this fun museum and the presenter knew how to switch from a pitching to a kindergartner to pitch into a fifth grader and did a great job. And then in the evening, we had about a hundred and twenty people choose to come with their, like kids who might not have come to a museum before with their kids, I think. And it was really wonderful, some homeschool families, some out of the county. Um, it was, I really do think that this, having an educational fun event and giving them a little quarter sheet saying, you're invited to come to the museum today was, it really was, I just loved it, it was so much fun. And it was fun to see the kids sort of dragging their, to their parents in, in the evening. And that's, that's successful for an evening program, like, very successful, but more successful than the safety forum in terms of drawing people, so...
Well, that could be looked at two ways.
So, exactly, that could be looked at two ways.
Hands-on activities.
And the other thing that started with Headwaters was after-school enrichment, September 25th, um, started and I, I believe that students can still enroll and, and live in after-school lunches and things. And Reed also started, um, the last Christmas, September.
We didn't have a meeting, we have a meeting next week.
Well, we did have a meeting, but you were apple buttering.
I was doing apple buttering, that's true. I thought we'd already talked about it.
It's okay.
I talked to you about it.
You did. It was the joint meeting between the governing board and the academic advisory board. Roseanne Williamson gave her update for the year, the annual report, everything's going really well. They are implementing the strategic plan, their new strategic plan. Equity is a big issue to be addressed there as well, um, looking at demographic gaps and, and, uh, financial economically disadvantaged students as a whole, also mental health and stress, which was wonderful for that demographic, having, um, some problems there. So, uh, the, the government of school is looking at proactive ways to, to deal with that.
They also used their budget to, to let us go another year at the same rate.
Yes.
They didn't have a raise in tuition. Um, we've been able to have a little, a little bit of a surplus because of lax turnover and that kind of thing with staff, so we used that surplus to offset tuition rates more exclusionary.
Create a contingency fund so that...
Do we now have ten or nine?
No, right now.
Nine right now.
But we pay for each one.
It's what you can, but you can get eleven, pay for seven.
Yeah, I'll work on that.
All right, thanks. Moving on, public comments, everybody would like to address some...
One more thing, you know, oh, hold on, sorry. The apple butter is fabulous, isn't it?
That's nuts.
And if you haven't come to the cookie mart, we're selling at the cookie mart, it'll be on Sunday then.
All right, moving on, public comments, everybody would like to address a question.
Shameless, though.
Yes?
Uh, I'll talk from here.
Can you? Introduce yourself to us.
I'm Hal Hunter, uh, Jackson District. Um, I have three grandchildren going through the public schools in Maine. They all have 529s. The, the grandparents have contributed to that, they're, the 529s are doing fine, but The 529s are doing fine, but that's not one I really wanted to say. The kids have commented on the buddy bench, if that's what.
Buddy bench.
And it's all very routine, of course. If you need a friend, you just go to the buddy bench and it's no big deal. And it works very well and I'm glad to see it's going to be installed here.
Thank you.
Is the Maine part plan a 529 plan? Is that the one the state was doing or is that one that you guys set?
I'm not qualified to comment on that. I just get these statements that.
You just get a bill.
No, I get I get a statement that it's doing fine.
That's good.
Yes.
Anyone else? Ms. Johnson.
I'll sit right here, too. I'll stay. I'm Melanie Johnson from Pea Mountain.
We are so familiar with you.
Two things that I especially like tonight, suicide, since there's so much talk about suicide all the time, I'm glad to see our school's on top of it. Their parents expect this, but their children be protective when they're in school and I'm sure this is a good way in our proof of this. And then the children's saving account. I really, really like that one because if a child has a saving account in their name, they will want to add to it. I know for a fact. And I think grandparents, as a rule, don't know at Christmas or birthdays what to give the grandchildren. And I'm sure they would welcome a big check. I really think that's a good thing. Now, I know this is not geared toward college, which is good. I think it's it's good for anything. But last year, I had a bad experience with somebody that graduated and had no money. Although she had a scholarship, she did not have enough money to even get in school until three days before she had gone everywhere she knew where to go to get somebody to co-sign. She couldn't get anything from the bank. Had she had $1,000 in the bank, she could have gotten something from the bank. I mean, if and if with this, if you're starting off with a hundred, by the end, 12 years, you would have, you should have enough money that that you could at least get somebody to co-sign for you. And and two days before it was time for her to go to school is when she died in. Finally found somebody that we co-signed for. And I mean, I think that's, I think it's a good thing, but it's good for both. I think it's good for both. And I think it's a good education to train children to save money. And you've got to start somewhere. And I think in kindergarten is probably the best place to start rather than the third or fourth year, but you don't have, so I mean, I think that's a good thing.
Thank you, Melanie Johnson. All right, anyone else? Talking a bunch. All right. New business. Do we have any new business? No, we have a counter removal first. I got it, I skipped tonight. Is there a motion to approve the counter modification? So we're in this room, is there a second?
With stipulation. For the stipulation.
Do you want to modify the motion? We were accepting the modification.
I think you should say it's one of our, it's one of our bank days.
As a bank day.
It's a bank day.
Accept the counter modification noted as a bank day will be the motion. On the paper, aye?
Aye.
All right, folks, go. So what are, is there any new business? Next regularly scheduled board meeting is November 13th at 6:30 here. On November 15th, the majority of this board, I believe.
You can give me a chance to talk.
15th of November. I did not, did I? November 15th, on Thursday, the majority of this board will be in a vehicle going to the Schoolwork hours in Williamsburg. We're allowed to do that as far as retreats go. This is a conference retreat format. And so if you have any questions about that, you can ask. Expect, I think, all four of us, right?[1683.62]